Alright, good uh, good evening, everybody. Gonna read the remote meeting script and we'll uh, get into our agenda. Pursuant to chapter two of the acts of twenty twenty-three, this meeting will be conducted via remote means. In accordance with applicable law, this means that members of the public body as well as members of the public may access this meeting via virtual means. Participants may access this meeting through the remote meeting link as posted on the meeting agenda and through the town's online calendar. When required by law, when required by law or allowed by the chair, persons wishing to provide public comment or otherwise participate in the meeting may do so. By raising their hands or otherwise signaling their intent to speak. The meeting will be recorded. Please take care to mute your microphone unless you have been recognized by the chair. We will now confirm attendance of members. Please respond with present if you're on the call. Elise Mayaloski.
Present.
Lucia Lopez.
Present.
Matthew Ranca.
Present.
Michael King. Alright, I don't see Michael yet. Uh, Parker Happ. Uh, Peter Mimo.
Present.
Welcome to the planning board.
Thank you.
Uh, am I pronouncing this right? Amna Dawan?
You're unmuted.
You're unmuted. I can see you and I sing, I see you hand waving, so I know you're here. Let's go, uh, Vic, Vikasath Prathi.
I'm here.
And Rob Benson is here. Alright. Let's, uh, John, I didn't see if Michael was joining or said he wasn't gonna be here. Do you know?
No, I haven't heard anything yet.
Alright, I'd like to kinda stall almost for a minute or two to uh, see if he's here, because our first uh, agenda item is to, we just had our town election, so this is our first meeting after our new planning board members have been sworn in, so we're gonna, elect a chair and a vice chair, so I'm kinda stalling here. Let's see if uh,
Rob, you could do the other two admin items.
Alright, let's go through the two admin items.
Sorry, Rob. You could do pretty much the whole agenda if you really want to.
Alright, well, we'll see how it goes. If uh, if Michael, at some point, we'll, we'll uh,
You heard you were calling.
Hey, Michael, uh, can you hear us?
I can. Coming in loud and clear. How's it going, guys?
Alright, alright, great. I just wanted, uh, I was just kinda stalling to see if you were able to join, uh, cuz we're, it's the first meeting, like I said, after town election where our new planning board members have been sworn in, so customary to how we work. Uh, we allow for reorganization of the board and um, with that, typically, I think in the past, we've tried to have, people have nominated people for chair. Um, and then we subsequently nominate people for vice chair and we, we vote. So would anyone like to nominate anyone for chair?
Uh, I just would like to nominate you.
Thanks, Vic. I appreciate that.
I'd like to nominate Matt for chair.
Alright. Any other nominations? John, I don't remember how, when we have multiple nominations, do we just ask uh, for people to choose a, uh, choose?
It's really however the board wants to handle it. Um, you could have each nominee give a statement as to why they want to be, uh, chair and then you could do a straw poll at the beginning and then make a motion on one person or you can just, I guess, vote, made, someone can make a motion and then, board members can either vote up or down, and then if it passes, it passes. If it doesn't, then somebody else can make a motion for the other nominee and then that could go the same route.
Alright, uh, Ma- first off, Matthew, would you, uh, do, would you like to give a statement or a comment or, or do you want the position?
Yeah, sure. Um, yeah, no, I, I would, uh, I would be willing to be chair of the board. Um, I, as, as I've said in the past, right, anything I can do to help the board and I've been on the board for a few years now. Um, the past year I was vice chair. Attended uh, almost all, if not all, the sidewalks. Uh, during the special town meeting, I met with some of the uh, affected condo, uh, organizations and uh, it was a really helpful meeting, I think, in terms of talking through their, hearing their concerns, and helping explain some of the things that was, were unclear to them. So I've got that background. Um, really like hearing all the concerns that people have brought forward, um, like, uh, being involved with the board, uh, prior to the past years, working on uh, with Gary and, and Jane on the sidewalks and connectivity and looking forward to seeing what we can do with the board going forward.
Alright, terrific. Um, I, I might as well give a little comment. Uh, so Vic, thank you for nominating me. Uh, I think there's two things that are uh, come to mind off the top uh, as chair. Um, is running an efficient meeting. I've been on the board now five years and uh, we used to regularly, these meetings used to regularly go until eleven PM. I think it's important, to run an efficient meeting, so their um, voices are heard, but also there's not a lot of just re, re, people re-saying the same thing over and over again. So, uh, I think that's one thing uh, I, I bring to the table, I should try to run an efficient meeting. And the other thing, uh, I think on the planning board, I think everybody that's been on the board knows, is about eighty percent of what we do is we follow a process and uh, we vote, and uh, uh, according to our bylaws and, and basically, we try to do what's in the best interest of the town. But then there's that twenty percent of what we do, or what, what we can impact, that is probably a hundred times as impactful. Like if you look at the MBTA communities or other things like that in the past, like that takes um, uh, less time in our, our week-to-week meetings than going through applications. But it's just so much more impactful, so um, I think I have a good sense of what people in town, want for the future of Hopkin and just by living here for over forty years. Um, so that's what I bring to the table, so. Let's figure out a process to try to uh, move this to the next step. Um, why don't we just go, uh, go through and, I'm just gonna call names and you can cast your vote. I think that's the fastest way to go. I'd like to entertain a motion that uh, each planning board member, vote for their respective choice for chair and that will, uh, whoever wins the majority will be elected chair.
So moved.
Thanks, Parker.
Second.
Thanks, Michael. Uh, roll call vote. Elise Mayaloski. We'll go back to Elise. Lucia.
Matt.
We have to vote on the motion first to, do we have a second? Do we have, do we have a second?
Yeah, Mike.
Point of order, do we have to vote on the motion to all vote to then voice our pick? Is that what's happening?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sure.
Uh, just do a straw poll, which kind of achieves the same thing, and then if there's a majority, somebody moves that, that person be nominated. And then you vote on that. Or you could do a,
Okay, so it's just a yes or no then?
Yeah, it would just basically, uh, basically be a, a straw poll to figure out if there, if there is a majority, and then you just move that nomination.
Alright, let's uh, let's do that. Are Michael and Parker, are you okay with rescinding your motion?
Yes.
Alright, excellent. Uh, straw poll. Elise, are you on the call?
Yeah, sorry. I'm uh, single parenting and it's the middle of bedtime, so.
I'm sorry about that.
Um, that's alright. Um, I, are we just saying names right now?
Yes.
Okay, um, for the next year, um, I like Rob for chair.
Thank you, Elise. Uh, Lucia.
Matt.
Matt.
Uh, sorry, that's calling me. Matt, uh, Matthew.
Matthew. Okay. Michael King.
I think both he would be great, but yeah, I'll go with Rob.
Parker Happ.
I vote for Matt.
Peter Mimo.
I'll vote for Matt.
Vikasath Prathi.
Rob.
I'm the, uh, I'm the Dawan.
Nice to meet you all. My mute's now working. I'll go for Rob.
And I will go for myself. So five to four, uh, my count. Uh, Elise, Michael, Vic, Amna and Rob, vote for me, Lucia, Matt, Parker and Peter for Matt. Alright, I'd like to entertain a motion to nominate Rob Benson as chair of the planning board.
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Michael. Thanks, Parker. Roll call vote. Elise Mayaloski.
Yes.
Lucia Lopez.
Yes.
Matthew Ranca?
Yes.
Michael King?
Yes.
Parker Happ?
Yes.
Peter Mimo?
Yes.
Amna Dawan?
Yes.
Rob Benson is a yes. Vikasath Prathi?
Yes.
Alright, excellent. And now we need to nominate uh, for vice chair.
I'll nominate Matthew.
Thank you, Michael. Is there any other nominations? Alright, I'd like to entertain a motion that uh, Matthew Ranca is nominated as vice chair of the planning board.
I'll second that.
I think, yeah, Lucia moved the motion and Peter is second. Alright, Elise Mayaloski.
Yes.
Lucia Lopez.
Yes.
Matthew Ranca?
Yes.
Michael King?
Yes.
Parker Happ?
Yes.
Peter Mimo?
Yes.
Amna Dawan?
Yes.
Vikasath Prathi?
Yes.
And Rob Benson is a yes. Alright, thanks, everybody. Um, it's uh, it's always a, um, it's always a little uh, te- tense to, I think, to get through that process, but good job. Um, alright, item one dot two on our agenda is to authorize our principal planner, John Gelsic, to endorse approval not required, uh, plans on behalf of the planning board. We've done this in the past. Uh, I think this is uh, a no-brainer unless anyone has any comments uh, or questions.
Rob, would you like to make, would you like me to explain that to the new members?
Yeah, that would be terrific.
So uh, A and R's approval not required plans are um, a form of subdivision approval that, doesn't actually need to go through the subdivision approval process. They can submit a plan, it gets done without a hearing, it gets basically done in one meeting. Planning board members are then required to go and sign it. We need a majority to sign it. In the past, it's been tough because we had um, everyone have to come into town hall and sign it and then we'd be waiting a week or two. Um, and so what this does is it authorizes me to send a letter to the registry of deeds saying, that the planning board authorizes me to sign on their behalf. So when an A and R gets approved by the planning board, they still have the approval authority. I can just say, planning board approved it, sign it on their behalf, and then they can go bring it to the registry, which avoids all of you having to come into town hall and sign it yourselves.
After getting the explanation, are there any additional questions?
It just, does, does that mean they'll, they'll be required a signature stamp from all of us?
No, this vote, John Gelsic, principal planner, on behalf of the Hopkin Town planning board. Thank you.
Yep. Alright. I'd like to entertain a motion uh, upon any vote by the board to endorse approval not required plans, John Gelsic, principal planner of the town of Hopkin Town is authorized to endorse said approval not required plans on behalf of the planning board.
So moved.
Second, Matthew. Thanks, Michael. Roll call vote. Elise Mayaloski.
Yes.
Lucia Lopez.
Yes.
Matthew Ranca?
Yes.
Michael King?
Yes.
Parker Happ?
Yes.
Peter? Peter Mimo?
Yes.
I'm the Dawan?
Yes.
Vikasath Prathi?
Yes.
And Rob Benson is a yes. Alright. I don't know if we have the developer on for twenty-four Chestnut Street. I, I think I saw Rick Olstein. Um, would you like to s- speak to what you'd like, like, done here or what? Uh,
Yes, I, I am here. Um, we are requesting lot releases for, uh, three lots of the development right now. Um, we have prepared an estimate to complete the outstanding work. The town's consulting engineer has prepared their own estimate, which um, you know, will prevail, obviously, and so we're, uh, prepared to post surety for um, the amount of their estimate. And so are here looking for the lot releases for lots, um, two, three and five.
John, am I, am I reading this correctly? Like, the, the letter or the PDF I'm looking at is par estimate review zero, five, thirty, twenty-five? And it has a different total. What uh, is it because there's only a subset of lots being released?
So this is what you're looking at, I assume?
Yep.
So what happens, and I guess I'll go through another brief explanation for the new members. Um, when a subdivision is approved, they can begin construction, excuse me. Um, and they basically build out the road first and they don't, don't build a road to finish level, they build it to a certain, a point. Um, and then they look to get the lots released, and what that means is they can now release it from the obligations, associated with the Form E in order to sell the lots to a homebuyer. Um, at this point, if the developer were to abandon the project, the town would have to go and finish the work on the road, in order for that to be a viable road. Um, and so what this estimate is, is, the estimated cost for the town to do the work. The developer submits their estimate, um, which is what Rick had sent over, which is lower, but usually developers, put their estimate together based on their costs, and they might get cost savings through, cheaper labor or cheaper materials. The town has to factor in prevailing wage, which is a higher uh, wage cost and labor cost, so that's why the town's estimate is usually higher. They can't really build in material costs because we've got to go with industry standards rather than what a developer likely could get on the market. Um, and, and then we also do a twenty percent contingency for inflation and other associated costs, so it seems uh, a little silly to do two estimates, but sometimes if the board sees that the peer review estimate is exceptionally high and they, don't, don't think it would actually cost that much, they can, you know, pick a, a number in between or they can go with the developer's estimate. Um, but in this case, it looks like uh, par, and we have Bob Sykes on the call uh, to explain a little bit more how they came up to this estimate, but, we had Par's estimate, they, they went through that process, and so what the board now has to do is determine an amount. Usually we go with the peer review estimate because it's higher and that just protects the town a little bit more. Um, once they set that amount, the applicant thing can, can go get a bond. And usually what the process is, then they'll submit the Form K to actually allow to release the lots. Um, what we can do here is, since it's a relatively straightforward process, the board can do both in the same time, and then we just hold on to the Form K, so that once we receive the bond or the proof that the bond is in place, we can then release the Form K to the developer and they don't have to go and wait for another, meeting to go and do that process. Uh, I will say with the Form K, though, the board members do have to come in and sign, we have to get a majority. I can't sign on your behalf for that one. So if the board decides to approve the Form K to release those lots, so the developer can sell them, you guys are gonna have to come in and sign. Once that's signed, and once we have proof of the bond, the developer can get that Form K back, and then they can go and sell the lots to a homeowner.
It could, I, I might just add two things. Number one, I, I believe we also need the lot releases to pull a building permit and start construction in any homes.
Um, Yeah, that may be true as well.
Uh, in addition to selling lots, and although we do feel that we can do the work cheaper than Par's estimate, we're, we're prepared to um, accept Par's estimate, so we're not really asking for a lower number.
Yeah, and to Rick's point, they probably could do it for their estimate. But that's, that's if the developer were to do it. The estimate for Par is really if the developer were to abandon it, which I have no, concerns that they're gonna abandon it, but if they were to abandon the subdivision, the town would then have to take it over.
Alright. Uh, Bob from Par, do you have any additional commentary?
Um, not really. Here to answer any questions that the board may have. I think, John, that was a great explanation. Very well done. Um, yeah, maybe just to add, we also were scoped to do um, field reviews, so interim field reviews of uh, the work that's completed on the site. So any of the work that's previously been completed has been eliminated from the estimate, uh, so this is just the work to complete um, the project as it stands today. Um, but yeah, no, very nice job, John. Thank you. Available for any questions, if there's any specific questions relative to how the costs are developed on our end.
Alright, are there any questions from the board? Alright, hearing uh, none or seeing none. I'd like to entertain a motion that the planning board set the performance guarantee for twenty-four, uh, Chestnut Street subdivision to, uh, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and five dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Matthew. Thanks, Michael. Roll call vote. Elise Mayaloski?
Yes.
Lucia Lopez?
Yes.
Matthew Ranca?
Yes.
Michael King?
Yes.
Parker Happ?
Yes.
Peter Mimo?
Yes.
Vikasath Prathi?
Yes.
Amna Dawan?
Yes.
And Rob Benson is a yes. I'd also like to entertain a motion that the planning board endorsed the Form K for twenty-four Chestnut Street subdivision, releasing lots X, Y and Z contingent. Do I, do we have the lot numbers, John?
Two, three and five.
Two, three and five. Releasing lots two, three and five contingent upon receipt by the town of the performance guarantee for the remaining work.
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Matthew. Thanks, Michael. Roll call vote. Elise Mayaloski?
Yes.
Lucia Lopez?
Yes.
Matthew Ranca?
Yes.
Michael King?
Yes.
Parker Happ?
Yes.
Peter Mimo?
Yes.
Amna Dawan?
Yes.
Vikasath Prathi?
Yes.
And Rob Benson is a yes. Alright, moving right along.
But Rob, before you move on, um, just a reminder to all the board members, come in and sign that Form K. Uh, when you can, we are open tomorrow until seven o'clock. That's our late day, and then we're open until four-thirty, on Wednesday and Thursday, and then two o'clock on Friday. So if you can stop by during those hours, that would be great.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Rick. Alright, moving on to uh, agenda item number two on our agenda. Continued public hearings.
Sorry, they, they requested a continuation of this hearing to address um, outstanding peer review comments.
Okay, I didn't uh,
Yeah, they did that, um, late Friday, I think.
Alright. This meeting is flying right along. We're into agenda item number three.
We do have to continue, and then we also have to extend the decision deadline to, but it, June twenty-third for the stormwater management permit. So it'd be continued the hearing to June sixteenth and the decision deadline for the stormwater management permit to June twenty-third.
Alright, I'd like to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for Bay Path Animal Shelter on Fruit Street. Uh, and the stormwater management permit to June sixteenth and extend the decision line, deadline for the stormwater management permit to June twenty-third.
So moved.
Thanks, Matthew.
Second.
Thanks, Michael. Roll call vote. Elise Mayaloski?
Yes.
Lucia Lopez?
Yes.
Matthew Ranca?
Yes.
Michael King?
Yes.
Parker Happ?
Yes.
Peter Mimo?
Yes.
Amna Dawan?
Yes.
Vikasath Prathi?
Yes.
And Rob Benson is a yes.
And who moved that and seconded?
I think it was Matthew and Michael?
Yep.
Thank you.
Alright, on to agenda item number three. Continue public hearing, one-on-one Ash Street Scenic Road Permit, Hopkin Trails, uh, committee, Peter Legoy. Alright, so we started, started this discussion last week. And this is a situation, uh, because it was discussed last week, that our new members can't, don't have a vote on this, John, correct?
Correct. New members that are not on the board when the hearing is opened are not eligible to vote on the hearing.
Okay. So let me just uh, kinda reiterate the background. Um, Ash Street is a scenic road. Uh, there's, this application was to propose cutting three trees, um, within the right of way, and relocating a boulder uh, by basically, rotating it ninety degrees, uh, to create two kind of uh, off-street, like side of road, um, parking areas uh, next to a trailhead uh, that's on Ash Street. Uh, last week, we had our, uh, two weeks ago, we had our director of DPW, uh, Carrie Reed say there was really nothing she saw as, she's also the tree warden, nothing she saw from her perspective that would say these, these trees are, uh, significant, um, where they should be protected. Uh, there was a sidewalk uh, this past Tuesday night. So that's, that's the background. Um, does anybody have any comments or questions?
Just a point of order. Does this also mean the new members can't also vote on the Bay Path matter that we just skipped over? Cuz that was also a continued hearing, just so I understand.
Correct. That, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Point of clarification on that, though, I think the, the new board members can um, provide comment and opinion, but they just can't vote on the actual permit issuance.
Thank you.
Go, uh, go ahead, Victoria.
For those of you that didn't meet me last week, my name is Victoria and I live at one-on-one Ash Street. I attended the last hearing, um, specifically to express my safety concerns regarding the proposed parking lot at one-on-one Ash Street. We appreciate the planning board giving us the chance to express our concerns about the parking lot, because it would significantly impact us as residents of the subject property. At the last hearing, I shared that we didn't have a lot of time to consider the trails committee, um, proposal because we'd had only one week of notification, but after a lot of consideration and research, we're still firmly opposed to the installation of the parking lot, at one-on-one Ash Street. While we agree with overall goal of the trails committee to increase access to the trails, the proposed parking lot would not only fail to achieve this goal, but it would have many negative effects on people that live on or travel down Ash Street. I have prepared, um, several comments related to these negative effects, so if everyone could just bear with me while I get through them, I would really appreciate it. And I just wanted to note that I've previously shared this list pretty much in its entirety with Peter, so he's aware of everything that I have to say. And thanks again for your time for letting me make them of record now. First and foremost, as noted at the last hearing, our primary concern is safety. And the site of the parking lot, there's no sidewalk or shoulder, and you know that people parking their cars in that location wouldn't be able to open the passenger door, on the right side of the vehicle due to the presence of the stone wall. This means that anyone exiting a parked car would have to open their car door into Ash Street, and walk along Ash Street to exit their vehicle. Also, any car parked on the side of the road would be a physical barrier to pedestrians or bike riders, which forces them into the middle of the road. As you might have saw at the site visit, the road's extremely narrow and curvy, and I can tell you from someone who uses Ash Street every day, it's really difficult for two SUVs to share the road. Um, and also people just drive way too fast because the road. Um, and also people just drive way too fast because the road is so narrow. And to avoid parked cars, drivers themselves would have to enter into oncoming traffic. This is particularly concerning because drivers traveling south down Ash Street do not have a clear line of sight as they come up the hill and might not see people exiting their cars, pedestrians, bike riders, or other motor vehicles. Second, in regard to our own safety as residents of the subject property, the parking lot would increase motor vehicle traffic near and potentially down our driveway. We have two small children who right now use the driveway to raise trucks and learn how to ride their bikes. Um, one day, that's where they're going to be waiting for the school bus right next to the proposed parking lot. Our children are small and increased motor vehicle traffic is inherently unsafe around small children who aren't, might not be visible to drivers. Um, and then third, in addition to our safety concerns, we're also concerned that this would create a nuisance for us. For example, um invasion of privacy by members of the public, increased noise and foot traffic, a decreased ability to get out of our driveway and a poor line of sight when exiting our driveway. And then also then increase in litter and debris at the side of the road. We also jut to the parking lot due to the lack of proper signage or barrier, barriers between our private property and the public trail access. Uh, we just wanted to note for members of the board that might not be aware. Um, our private address one oh one Ash Street is currently listed as location of the trail on the town website. And Elmwood Farm Trail Map that's available at the state website masttrails.com clearly indicates that the opening to our driveway is location of parking. These factors, in addition to the lack of signage and physical barriers, creates a lot of confusion between our private property and the public access point of the trail. And this confusion um specifically caused by the trail map that's available at the state website encourages the public to use our private property to access the trail. As owner, uh, as owners of the property, uh, this introduces legal risk for us because we would be liable if someone were to get hurt on our property. Uh, fifth, as mentioned at the site visit, the trails committee has indicated that they don't have any plans to maintain the property. Um, and this is not something that we're interested in maintaining. For example, as I said, cleaning up litter or removing snow or de-icing. Uh, six, our well is located within twenty-five feet of the proposed parking lot. We're concerned that any effect on drainage due to the addition of the parking lot would disrupt the quality of our drinking water. And seventh, I, I promise finally, we have a reasonable belief that the proposed modifications would affect our property. Specifically, if you look at Plan nine sixty-two of twenty twelve for the town of Hopkinton and shows that a portion of the stone wall is within the border of our property and is not in town's right of way. The trails committee hasn't performed anywhere to appropriate, appropriately conclude that the proposed modifications would not affect our property. Um, so as I noted last week, there's alternatives to park and access the trail. Less than a football feet away is Blueberry Lane where hikers can safely park and access the trail. There's also points of entry nearby neighborhoods like Stone Crossing Way. Um, on a final note, I've been told that the planning board has to approve this project because the only thing that you could consider in your analysis is despite the six listing criteria in section one sixty dash six of the town bylaws is whether or not the trees are um contribute to the aesthetic value of the road and because it's quote an ugly tree, it has to be removed. To this point, I just want to note that the criteria is not whether or not the tree is ugly. It's whether the removal of the tree would adversely affect the scenic road and aesthetic values upon which the scenic road was based. The present ugly trees that we're talking about are the same shape, character, and condition as many other ugly trees on Ash Street. And so because it's, the condition of the tree is consistent with the character and nature of the rest of Ash Street. I think it does contribute to the aesthetic values. So thanks for your time.
Thanks, Victoria. I can tell you're very passionate about this and uh obviously it's right at your property, so it's very important to you. I'd like to get I think maybe I start off by sharing my sentiment of, of, of this and we, we go through the board and see. And then we see if there's any uh what we can do. So I also lived on a scenic road in Hopkinton and I would be irate if somebody was gonna put two parking spaces in front of my property. So I can see why a homeowner, landowner, would not want uh a consistent parking opportunity right in front of their home on a road that really is not meant for cars parking on the side of the street with people entering and exit, exiting their vehicles. Like my, the street I live on is a cut through to Upton. I live on Spring Street. And even if a car was off the road, it's not a safe place to consistently park. And Ash Street's the same way. The, I'm sure the traffic is higher in the mornings and at night. So the matter, the question I have is before we get into what we can do as a board, is what, what do people think about like just the basic uh sense of what is right and wrong here? Do, do people think this is right to try to allow a parking air, parking spaces on the side of the road in front of somebody's home on a scenic road? Anyone have any comments?
Do the chair, or Michael, you can go ahead first if you'd like.
Oh no, you go first, Parker. I was just gonna add something small, so.
Are the applicants here?
I see Peter L. I think that's Peter Legoy in the, uh, on the screen.
Okay. Uh, the question I have to, to applicant is the parking space already exists in its current form. So there isn't a creation of a new place to park, is that correct?
I think this, the, the, the genus, the plan would be make it more readily accessible and maybe make it a little easier. I think right now people uh and Victoria, you probably would know best because you're there every day. It might not be very conducive to park right now.
Yeah. Um, I am available, Rob. Uh, I was having trouble unmuting. Uh, this is Peter Legoy, uh, Chair of the Trails Committee. Um, first off, we are gonna have uh another meeting and another abutters meeting to talk about some of the details um with regard to usage. Um, and you know, look at details with the neighbors. I think some of the things you're talking about here are really outside of the bounds of a scenic road hearing. Um, having said that, there are already existing places for people to pull off. We've had high school seniors doing a project down there uh last year. And I certainly and other members of the Trails Committee and Trails Club have parked there to do work. You have pretty good sightline in both directions. Um, having said that, there is a better parking area or parking spot just to the uh north of the driveway in front of ninety-seven. Um, and actually Kurt, the owner of ninety-seven Ash, did clear that a little bit more to make it more viable. And we're gonna probably plan on shifting things away from Victoria's driveway to the extent possible. What we're asking for here is in particular, there's a sassafras tree that's right in the middle of the area. We'd want to add some stoned dust to, to make this a better, more viable and safer parking spot than the parking that already exists there.
Peter, uh, who ultimately controls whether um Trails Committee could like fundamentally clear out a space on the side of a road in front of somebody's home? And to make it a more accessible parking, is that the select board? Who, who ultimately controls that authority to allow the Trails Committee to do that?
I think ultimately the select board, cause that's who we speak to. And they've sort of tasked us with, with finding areas to park and, and access to the town trails to increase the use of town trails by the town residents. Um, do I think there's gonna be a lot of increase at this particular area? No, I don't. As Victoria noted, um, if there were a number of cars coming, they are likely to park a little bit down the road. But if you've got one person or a couple of people with some kids, parking right at the trailhead does work, but ultimately this would be a select board. But it's like any other road in town, if there's a place you can pull off, unless there's no parking signs, then anyone can, has the right to park there.
Yeah, but the reality is nobody's gonna be clearing out a space in front of my house or, or any house on a scenic road uh to make a parking area unless they have authority like. Like, no, no, that's just not gonna happen, so. I don't know what uh, what to do here. I, I do not think this is in the best interest of the homeowner, the abutters. I don't think this is in the best interest of the town is making parking areas along the side of the road in front of people's homes on scenic roads. I am very against this. I think there's a lot of ways to access trails in Hopkinton and there's a lot of ways to create parking to access trails. And some of it might be sidewalks to access trails. But putting um a homeowner's like uh biggest investment at, at, as a secondary thing to a parking area for a trail doesn't seem like uh the right thing to do. Does anyone have any additional comments or we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to go through the agenda and I don't know our I'll have to, uh, we'll have to decide if we have any real authority to deny, but um, I don't like it.
It's Amna. Do I, how do I address? Do I address the chair?
Yeah, yes, that'd be great.
Um, I know I'm a new member and I can't vote. Um, but just to address the chair and the team, it's um, I'm down the street on Ash Street. And the, like Victoria said, the road does curve a lot and it's incredibly dangerous, the way the cars park. It's also gonna be a danger to the public, so I don't think it'll necessarily be a safe parking lot. Um, you can open your car door and if there's people who cycle there and if a bicyclist comes, if the car door is open, they could easily hit it um and flip. It's, it's the way the cars are parking, the way the, the road curves, it's not safe. It's a safety issue too.
Thanks, Amna. Uh, Victoria, I'll come to you in one minute. Uh, Matthew, go ahead.
Thanks, Rob. I, I agree with the applicant's statement here that I believe that we've significantly left the bounds of the hearing. And I, in this situation, it's a town organization that has already said that they want to take in, you know, before they actually build the parking lot, which is where most of our discussion has been. They want to discuss further with the rest of the town, for instance, and they are basically uh beholden. In the end, if this is going through the select board to the town voters. Um, I, I do wanna caution everyone that if this were a private entity that we're applying and we are basically considering making a decision based on something that's not relevant to the laws or the bylaws. Um, it, it could seriously be putting us at, in our, our jurisdiction at risk.
Can you speak more to that? I don't totally understand what you're, can you extrapolate on that?
The fact that there's a parking lot here is not within the bounds of what we're being asked to make a decision on and what our criteria is here. If we were to make a decision that wasn't grounded in the bylaws and the zoning guidelines and this MGL, and we were just to say we don't believe that something should happen, that the property owner has a right to do. Uh, it'd be every, it would be in the right of the property owner then to basically sue the town and the board.
This is sorry to interject, but maybe I could say something briefly.
Matthew, just state your name and address, so uh for the record.
Yeah, my name is Matthew Jackson. I'm Victoria's husband, so I'm part of this uh, part of the subject property as well. Yeah, I just, I wanna clarify what, what the criteria that this board does have a governance over. Cause I, I heard a lot about aesthetics last meeting, right? Voting based on the aesthetics of a tree. But I don't, I don't think it's reasonable to remove any trees on any scenic road anywhere based on the aesthetics alone of the tree. So to say that aesthetics is the only criteria for evaluation here just, just doesn't make any sense to me. I, 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 yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't get rid of any trees based on how ugly they are. So I think um it's important to consider the reason for the removal is the project under consideration. So the safety of the project, the um, the feasibility of it, the reasonableness of it needs to be, should be taken into account with the removal of the tree. It's, it's my thoughts, but, but yeah, thanks for the consideration.
Go ahead, Lucia.
Um, so I wanna apologize that I didn't make the last meeting and uh the sidewalk did not work for me. It was uh Hopkins Open House night. So, but I did actually manage to go today to take a look at it. They had some utility work going on. I parked on Blueberry and I took a look and I did wonder in terms of if there's a good enough space for cars, especially the cars that people in Hopkinton tend to drive um to pull over on the side of the road. So I think I wanna echo most of what Rob said, but also echo what Matt says. Personally, I don't know that this is what I would be looking to do is to, you know, encourage people essentially to park there more so than they already do now because there is a cleared out area there um to some degree. I personally wouldn't park there. Uh, it doesn't seem like there'd be good enough space to do that. Um, and maybe this work would make it safer to park there. Um, but I do think that, you know, essentially we're being asked, is the removal of these three trees and the moving of this one boulder something that we should allow? Um, given our restrictions and I I, I think that's what we're voting on. Um, but I am happy if Victoria wants to reach out to, you know, members of the community. I'd be happy to be one of those members of the community to speak in terms of the, just the overall idea, concept of putting more parking there.
Thanks, Lucia. Uh, we, we got Victoria, uh, go ahead.
Hi, um, thanks for all of your comments. The main reason I raised my hand was because my neighbor's on the call and I, I think he's on his iPhone. So I just wanted to make sure that uh he had a chance to speak.
I see him. If you'd like to state your name and address, go, you're welcome to speak.
Uh, hi, yeah, sorry. I don't usually use my phone to, but I'm at work right now. But I, I'm Michael Lanin. I'm, I'm a resident of one oh five Ash Street. I'm Victoria's neighbor. You know, I've been a resident of Hopkinton for all of my life, twenty-seven years. I, I know there's a lot of stuff we're talking about. And if we're just talking about curbside appeal, I mean, just walking past that, I've walked to and from school when I was a kid. And I've never thought, hey, that's an ugly tree. I thought, hey, that's a tree that you know you're on Ash Street. It blends in, it's part of it. And I think, you know, building the parking spaces, I mean, that's gonna be what, a couple hundred square feet of removing roots and because it's not gonna be just cutting down a tree, it's not just rotating boulding. If we're gonna make a parking spot there, you're probably gonna be going into the ground, removing the roots. That's work, that's making the curbside uglier. And if we're talking about just finding spots where it's easier to access the trails. I've, I've walked the nature trails for a long time around there because they're just right by my house. And I know realistically, the majority of the trails are actually farther east on the streets. Around one hundred fifty Ash Street and uh Williams Way, for instance. From there, you get a much better access to the nature trails, to the, you know, the Birchwood Forest. To the, you know, streams, the areas people who are walking those trails want to access. And I, I've seen accidents right in front of my house. People thinking they have more space than they do and going over, you know, kind of the sharp parts of the we, we got a lot of hills. We we get a lot of hills, Hopkinton's a holy place, uh, Ash Street especially. I I think building the parking spot, parking spaces there of all places just. Is dangerous and frankly, it's also just invasive to our neighbors, to their privacy. Do they really deserve to have, you know, headlights from strangers, you know, directly on them? I mean, when you're a kid, I have a long driveway too. And when you're a kid, the long driveway is one of the best parts of those sort of properties, it's where you learn to skateboard and. Where you learn to ride your bike without training wheels, the hills where you sled, because you know, you're not sledding on Ash Street itself. So you're, it's taking away from this family, it's taking away from the experience and one of the best parts of. Living on a street like Ash Street, which isn't so close to or easy to access, you know, the rest of the town. It's not always so easy to know your neighbors on a street like Ash Street because of the privacy and. So if that's the case, if the privacy is sort of one of the perks, let me just get to keep. Let's let them, you know, keep their privacy, keep their property, let them use their front lawn, I think that's much more. Beautiful and will be appreciated by them than any parking spot could be appreciated by. Whatever community member that could just as easily walk over from Blueberry, which has plenty of street parking. Um, so that's all I have to say, uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, all right. Let's go to section three dot seven, so this is the, uh, Michael, go ahead.
I just want some clarity on the process, so. Uh, if we voted to approve removal of the tree in the boulder, then. The Trails Committee would have a free hand after that to get approval from the Select Board, or would they have to bring it as a article to town meeting?
I don't know.
Direct up to John, I guess, or whoever could find the answer, but.
Um, so my understanding is, I don't know what uh. Authority the Select Board has over the the project currently, if they've just given. Uh, the Trails Committee the ability to put parking in places, but it would also be DPW and I don't believe DPW has any issues, so. I don't know what the next step is. If it's just Trails putting in the work or DPW doing the work, uh, or if they need to go back before the Select Board, Peter might have a better idea as to what they would need to do.
Yeah, so the next step would be to have a meeting with the abutters, with the neighbors and with other folks in town. Um, typically we do an onsite meeting to get input from all the abutters. And then following that, um, the money we have was appropriated at town meeting, so it's five thousand dollars. Um, this is not, this is essentially adding. Two stone dust spaces, so what's right there right now is simply dirt extending to the stone wall. So this is simply adding a stone dust base. Um, and we would, we would go for forwarded with that work after that abutters meeting, that would be the plan. So it does not have to go to town meeting, does not have to go to Select Board approval, the Select Board have given us. Actually worked on setting up the process of having us inform the neighbors, but there's nothing else that controls what we need to do. It's not a con, there's not a con comm issue or any other hearing required.
All right, Matthew, go ahead.
Thanks, um, I wanna come back to two things that had been mentioned by some of the abutters. Um, so for the, for the, well, the three of us that were at the the sidewalk, right? There was one car that was parked next door in ninety seven, that was fully, that was in the parking spot that Peter mentioned. And it was out of the way, whereas one of the other vehicles per southbound was kind of. Leading into the street and you could see how that was impacting the flow of traffic. It was Parker, um, and and Carter's got a little bit anxious at that point. One of the uh, abutters had had asked about the, or had referred to the. Uh, tree stumps basically being in the way, so I I guess I hadn't really completely thought about that, given we're talking, you know, the. The scope, but I I'm curious. Do, does the applicant expect to actually remove all the trunks, or would they actually be in the way? Such that cars would actually be able to fully get into the new parking spot? Um, and then the other thing I wanna come back to is one of the abutters had referenced a boulder that was in her yard on her property. And so I wanted to clarify whether that's the boulder in discussion, or if this was a different boulder that's being asked to be moved.
So to respond to the uh, tree trunk issues, we cut them off. Level with the ground and simply put stone dust over top of them, we recognize that, you know, over time that will. Create a little bit of a hole, but it's, you know, over the next couple five, couple five years that'll happen and. A little more material would just be put down. Uh, the only exception is there is a sassafras that's, if you remember, that was the one kind of closer to the street and. That's small, so it's probably easier to try to get m- most of that out of there, but again, the the general plan is just cut them off. Level with the ground and we're gonna add probably, you know, at that, you know, a couple to eight inches of material over top of them.
Victoria, go ahead.
I I just, I wanted to respond um, to the two things that Matthew said. Um, the first was he mentioned that one of the cars was safely parked off the side of the road at ninety seven Ash Street. And I just wanted to comment, having been there for the whole meeting. If you watched as the person whose car that was got into the car, he did have to open his car door. Which caused a car traveling north on Ash Street to have to enter into the oncoming lane of traffic. So even if a car is parked at ninety seven Ash Street where it's supposedly in a safe location, it doesn't mean that it's actually safe. And that you won't have to enter into oncoming or force people into oncoming traffic. Um, you would also ask about the location of the rock wall. So that information I pulled from Plan nine sixty two of um, twenty twelve. Which is the deed that related to the um, town purchasing the eighty one acres of land from the farm. And then the other plan that supports that is the one for my neighbors at ninety seven Ash Street, which is plan number one hundred and thirty three. I just didn't write down the year that that was made available, so um, because there's no work done. That's specific to this project, I I know that a portion of the rock wall, based on those deeds. Is within our property boundary, but I'm not sure if it's the one at issue.
Thanks Victoria, uh, John, could we put uh, the decision criteria three dot seven up on the, on the Zoom link? Because this is really the crux of the matter.
John, you're unmuted if you're speaking.
Did we lose John? I think he's.
Of the town bylaws.
John, could you put up the proposed decision criteria in section three dot seven on the Zoom?
Sorry, I just stepped away.
That's okay. So typically, where where you're talking about zoning bylaws and everything in zoning is chapter two ten, so this is chapter one sixty. Scenic roads. So I guess the question, uh, does anyone have any? Like, I can just read them. The uh, these, this is what we have to base our decisions on, the degree. The degree to which proposed work would work would adversely adversely affect the scenic and aesthetic values upon which the scenic road designation was originally based. The necessity for the proposed work in terms of public safety, welfare or convenience. Compensatory compensatory action proposed such as replacement of freezer walls. Availability of reasonable alternatives to proposed work, work which would could reduce or eliminate anticipated damage to trees or stone walls. Whether the proposed work would compromise or harm other environmental or historical values. Consistency of the proposed work with previously adopted town plans and policies. So I don't know if anyone thinks um, there's anything uh, with this application that uh. We, this is what we have to base our decision on, the the six bullet points. And um, we don't really have much leeway uh, beyond that.
Through the chairs, I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Is the, is just to be clear, the parking space is already there. This is simply, it was already designated, is that just so unclear, it's kind of confused, that true, I follow that too, is that true or false? This, all this place already exists and we're looking, they're they're looking to put riprap or whatever the stuff is called on there.
So it's, there's, there's basically uh, a section, like, think of a scenic road, there's a section where there's basically enough space to pull your car. Mostly off the road, existing today, but this is to make the space a little bit bigger, so two cars could theoretically. More effectively be off of the road, but it's also. Um, it just makes more spaces and it's, makes it more. Um, noticeable for people to park there in front of um, the abutters home.
Okay, and then follow up question, on the scenic road, do the same rules apply in the town that up to, is it what, four and a half foot? That is technically under the ownership of the town? Does that applies in other places in the town? The egress is still applicable on a scenic way?
It's just all, it all matters with the right of way boundary versus the property boundary is. So the, the right of way boundary versus the property boundary is the, is the. Is the single line that distinguishes somebody's land versus town land.
Is the rocking question on town land, the sassafras tree definitely is, is a rocking question on town land?
I think that's what Victoria mentioned, that she's uh, she's questioning whether it is.
It is or isn't.
She's questioning if it's on town land, she.
Because I think, like, my ten cents, wherever it's worth, the sassafras, sassafras tree is in the town's property. And I don't think it's, it's too far a leap of. Logic to say, and under any other situation, this hadn't been a scenic road, that thing would have been gone weeks ago. Frankly, I think that is a, that sassafras tree is, how big it is, a safety hazard. If somebody has to like pull off to avoid, I don't know, a kid on a bike or something, like, you can make tons of safety arguments, but it's like, if. That's it, if that rock is in the egress, then I don't see why this shouldn't go forward. Because in, under any other situation, any other road in town, we wouldn't be here right now. Um, and, but just because uh, you know, this is. AC to grow, there's this, you know, additional impediment and. I mean, for the applicant, like, maybe we need to take one oh one Ash Street off the website and say it's near ninety five fast street. Because the other abutter that's directly on the other side, so he thinks it's great, he is happy that people are gonna use the trail more. Um, and I happen to think also under the decision criteria, it's asking about the aesthetic. I don't think this impacts the aesthetic to remove the one sassafras tree, I don't think that if we can pull the criteria up again, the fourth bullet is negated. Um, so, I don't know, that's my ten cents, um, I feel for the plight of the applicant. Uh, that they're trying to do well by the town, that a town meeting voted to appropriate funds for this and that the Select Board is simply. Following the logic of, you know, town voters, um, but yes, decision, the proposed work adversely affect the scenic road, probably not, taking one sassafras tree. Necessity of the project for public safety, we can call it a wash, I think it goes both ways, definitely improves convenience, so. Conceivatory action proposed for replacements of trees or walls, irrelevant. Availability of reasonable alternatives to proposed work, which could reduce or eliminate damage to trees or stone walls. I don't think the stone wall is damaged by moving at forty five degrees, but that's just me, so maybe the first bullet is irrelevant either. Whether proposed work would comp- comp- uh, compromise or harm the environment or historical values, I don't think so. Um, again, under any other situation, you you can put rocks down and make the trail more accessible and. Uh, consistency of proposed work with the previous stop, the town plans and policies. Um, sure, if we had enough time and enough lawyers, they could find ways that it does or doesn't, but. I just, I walked it and i- if we were having a different discussion on if we want to put sidewalks there. Um, the time to put sidewalks there if they wanted, so I think anybody would be opposed to that. So what's the difference between putting a sidewalk that somebody could pull off onto or even a, you know, bunch of rocks. Um, which people are going to as well, so my, my opinion, I think. We go by the way, the voters at town meeting, we go by the logic of our Select Board and, you know, we move forward with the one sassafras tree removal. And understand if the rock is on property or not, but that's my ten cents.
Thank you, Parker, uh, Victoria, go ahead.
I I just wanted to clarify that Peter shared with me the proposal that the town voted on. And it wasn't for these specific spots at one oh one Ash Street, it was just vague and very general about parking for the trail. So the voters of the town did not decide to put parking in my front yard. And I certainly was not aware and that I needed to show up to the vote in order to advocate for myself. Um, so I I just wanted to make it very clear that no one voted to put a parking lot in my front yard.
Yeah, uh, Victoria, thank you, that's, that's what I'm surprised here is how um. How this has come about, where it's try to find parking and any, uh, and it's just, okay, fine, um, without. Getting enough input to say uh, what the will of the town uh, wants and the will of the. Especially the abutters and and people associated with this. I think the challenge for us, unfortunately for the abutters on this call. Is I generally agree with Parker, I don't think we have, and what Matthew said earlier, I wanted to voice my uh. Opinion. Uh, at the beginning, but I don't think we really have a legal um. Grounds to 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 uh, hold this up on the planning board. And uh, I apologize that for Victoria and Matthew, but Matt, but I think we need to go forward through our process. Uh, ultimately, everybody on the planning board will vote, but um, I don't see how. How the decision criteria gives us authority based on what we know here. Victoria, go ahead.
Can I just have some clarification as to, like, specifically how the term proposed work is interpreted? By the statute and the town bylaws, because I have legal training and typically, when you're looking at the definition section. If it's an important word, it's defined there, and when you look at one sixty dash one in the definition section. Cutting or removal of trees is specifically defined, repair maintenance, reconstruction or paving work is specifically defined. And none of those two defined, clearly defined words are used in the town bylaws. So I don't think it's very clear in this situation what proposed work encompasses. But I don't think it's specifically to the definition of cutting down trees or removing stones on the wall. So I'm just confused about how that came about in the town's interpretation of this bylaw.
I would say.
I could probably answer that.
Go ahead, John.
The proposed work is what's the, what's being proposed in the application that was submitted for a scenic road permit. So in this case, the proposed work is the cutting of three trees and the moving of a boulder.
And do you mind just pulling that up for me so I can see it?
Pulling what up?
The application of. Yeah, I mean, I, it's just, it's, it makes no sense, to be honest with you, like the town went through the. The trouble of designating this as scenic road. And it just seems to be really easy to take down trees without any criteria. It's also confusing because if you look at previous planning board decisions. For example, related, related to the grasshopper project where they were able to specifically decide like what planter boxes went in front. Of their commercial solar farm, it, how can you possibly dictate something so detailed about a plan? If the only thing that you're there to judge is like the removal of trees or a stone wall, so I don't view this as being consistent. With previous decisions by the planning board. It doesn't make any sense, and I just think going like for everyone's knowledge, yeah, it just, it doesn't make sense.
All right, thank, thank you, Victoria. I think to a large degree, we're going by the guidance of our town's tree warden. And who's also the DPW director, and we get a. I think the next step is to voice your concerns at the next public hearing for the trails committee. Reach out to the select board. But we need, we need to go to section three dot nine of our, the proposed findings, I'm gonna read the proposed findings and the proposed conditions. The proposed trees to be cut are located within the right of way and removal of these trees is not in, and anticipated to have an adverse impact on the scenic value of Ash Street. The proposed work conforms to the provisions of chapter one sixty and that all applicable criteria and standards set forth in section one sixty dash six have been satisfied. Section three dot ten, proposed conditions. The applicant shall provide photographs of the proposed area or alteration after work has been completed. These photographs shall be submitted to the principal planner for review and approval. The applicant developer shall provide the principal planner with a project, project point of contact and contact information prior to the issuance of a building permit. This point of contact information is we kept current through the car, through correspondence to the principal planner until work is considered complete. The applicant shall work with a conservation admin, administrator to identify and implement appropriate erosion control strategies to mitigate adverse impacts. To wetland resources in the immediate air prior to work being undertaken on the site. All right. I'd like to entertain a motion that the board accept and approve the findings as they were previously read aloud by the chair.
So moved.
Thanks, thanks, Parker, roll call vote, Elise Mayaloski.
Yeah, unfortunately, I do.
Lucia Lopez.
Yes.
Matthew Ranka.
Yes.
Michael King.
Yes.
Parker Happ.
Yes.
Peter Mimo, oh, Peter, you can't, sorry, Vikasath Prathi.
Yes.
And Rob Ensign is a yes. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion that the board approved the scenic road permit with the following conditions, as they were previously read aloud by the chair. Thanks, Parker, thanks, Vic, roll call vote, Elise Mayaloski.
Yeah.
Lucia Lopez.
Yes.
Matthew Ranka.
Yes.
Michael King.
Yes.
Parker Happ.
Yes.
Vikasath Prathi.
Yes.
And Rob Ensign is a yes. I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing for one oh one Ash Street scenic road permit.
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Matthew, thanks, Parker, roll call vote, Elise Mayaloski.
Yes.
Lucia Lopez.
Yes.
Matthew Ranka.
Yes.
Michael King.
Yes.
Parker Happ.
Yes.
Vikasath Prathi.
Yes.
And Rob Ensign is a yes. So item number four on our agenda, we got a, I got an email from Jeff. At the Sustainable Green Committee that he wasn't available at this time, is that, is that what you're understanding, John?
Yeah, that was my mistake, I assumed that we were doing a joint meeting, but that's not how it was scheduled, so it's really just plenty more doing it at one time. Scenic, sorry, scenic, sustainable green committee doing it at, I think they might have done it earlier tonight.
Can confirm that that happened.
Awesome. All right, so. John, do you want to kick us off on, give us some background of, of this topic here?
Sure, so. Silo Climate Consulting Peyton is owner, founder, CEO. Of SCC, they came before the planning board a couple weeks, months ago. To talk about the FEMA brick grant that we've gotten awarded to do a review of. Regulations and bylaws in town to find opportunities for nature-based solutions, better. Better ways of doing development that are more environmentally friendly, stormwater friendly, that type of thing. So as part of that whole project, they are doing roundtable discussions with Sustainable Green Committee, which already happened tonight, and now they're doing one with the planning board. To get input, and is there a presentation, Peyton, I don't think there was, right?
I do have a presentation, if that works, I can share my screen.
Sure, let me give you the permission. But they're really just looking for planning board and any members of the public's input on the effort so far. And some of the, the items that they've talked about with us internally.
Thanks, John. I can jump into the presentation unless you want to tee up anything else, or if anyone has any questions right off the bat. Okay, great. Okay, so again, I'm Peyton Siler Jones, it's fantastic to be here with you all tonight. I know my colleague Lucy Perkins joined you a couple weeks ago, maybe a couple months ago. And when she was here last time, my understanding is that she introduced this project to you all and sort of talked about the methodology at a high level. And kind of reviewed, um, the core objectives. Does anybody have, was anybody not there, and that would be helpful for me to review what this project is, or is everyone pretty clear about the super high level goals?
No, Peyton, we definitely had people on the board that were not at that meeting.
Okay, great, great, so just super briefly, this project is. One of the actions that came out of the town's climate action plan last year. Was to do a scan of the town zoning code and bylaws to understand, are there opportunities to. Increase climate resiliency so that as the town continues to develop, it's done in such a way that keeps residents safe. To increase precipitation and flooding in particular, but also increased heat. And so, our team has been working really collaboratively with John and Julia, the sustainability manager. To do a scan of those bylaws and regulations, and I can talk a little bit more about how we get that in a minute. To make a couple of recommendations, and what this meeting is really going to be focused on is us sharing what those preliminary recommendations are. And hearing from you all if we're heading in the right direction, if there are any concerns that you want to flag kind of upfront. Any sort of redirecting, because we really see this summer as us vetting those preliminary recommendations with you all and with other members of the community. So that ultimately, when that final report is delivered to John's desk in September, we've made sure to integrate all of your feedback. Any questions about the project?
No.
Okay.
Not for me.
Great. Well, I can see you all on the screen, even with the slide shared, so don't hesitate to raise your hand or just go off mute, if you, if that changes at any point. But again, kind of the hope for this meeting today is to update you on the progress we've had since we came to the board last. And then share those draft recommendations with you all and start to get your feedback, and I want to be clear upfront that. This presentation will not be your last opportunity to provide feedback, so after the conversation tonight, we're happy to share with you the draft version of the report. And share with you the questions that we have, and you can sit with that and provide responses via email through John at any point. So, just briefly to talk about the process so far, we kicked this off in November. With a group of municipal staff, so of course John, Julia, but also we had the conservation commission there. We had a handful of other folks, John, jump in if you remember the names of everybody off the top of your head. But essentially, a group of like ten people came together, and we vetted the core goals of the bylaw review with that group. Just to make sure before we sort of finalize our methodology that we had designed it in such a way that would really achieve the, the goals of the community. And then we dug right into doing an analysis of your bylaws. And we used the Mass Audubon bylaw review tool, which basically assesses existing by, it's like a methodology for assessing existing bylaws. For climate resiliency metrics, and it basically allows us to kind of do a, a high level look and know. Okay, which elements of your current bylaws and zoning code are kind of common. Sort of baseline typical practices that you would see, which ones are sort of. A little bit better than those sort of baseline, most common practices in turn, again, in terms of climate resiliency. And then where are, is the town already kind of utilizing those best management practices for reducing stormwater flooding? And reducing extreme heat and things like that, so after we did that review. And if John or Lucy has not already shared the back end of this, and anyone on the, the zoning board wants to see it. We're happy to share the full analysis with you at any time, oops. We did kind of a, an analysis of, of best practices. And, and based on that initial review, we had a couple core findings. So one is that your bylaws and regs already do a really fantastic job of considering low impact development to the environment. So, when it, when it came to site plans and design, it was already pretty strong, so that was one of the findings. The other findings was that, you know, your existing practices are already very much in compliance with what the state DEP. Recommends for stormwater management standards, and so in terms of like, the general MS four permits. The stormwater management criteria for new development is really strong. The third finding was that there was a real opportunity to incentivize new development to minimize impervious surfaces. And really maximize the potential for onsite infiltration of stormwater. And that'll come up in the recommendations, but that's an, an obvious opportunity to, to mitigate future flooding. And then the, the fourth kind of core finding. Is that the, the town's current zoning bylaws really maintain size and setback requirements across all zoning districts. And there could be an opportunity to promote more efficient or compact development patterns. With that awareness that we want to be able to have flexibility over time as development continues, and we also want to. Be considering, again, maximizing impervious surfaces in the town. So, after we sort of, I think I mentioned this a second ago, but we sort of built on the findings of that initial. Bylaw review and developed a report on best practices, and we know Hopkinton and recognize that not. Case studies from every community in Massachusetts is not necessarily going to be relevant for y'all. So we really tried to look at communities who have similar characteristics to Hopkinton. So in the greater Boston region, who maybe have a population around your size, similar development patterns. Because we wanted to look for examples that would be replicable to you all and not just like, oh yeah, in Boston, they did this thing, or in Worcester, they did this thing. So, that report really identified some case studies that we think are, are relevant to you all. So then, we started to develop some public engagement materials around these findings, so kind of one oh one materials that. That we're happy to share with you, that includes like an ARC GIS story map and some. Like one pagers on, you know, best management practices on your own personal property and things like that. And then now we're sort of getting into, as I mentioned earlier, that development of the preliminary recommendations that are emerging. From that initial review, from the best practices research, and so that's what I'm really going to get in today, into today. Because right now, we're working on a draft report that, again, happy to share with you. That really lists out what those preliminary priorities are. So I'm gonna walk you through those priorities, but before I do, I'm just gonna kind of flash up here. This is what I'm going to be asking you after I talk through what those initial recommendations are, so. Just so you can kind of have it percolating while I'm talking, one, I'm curious to hear from you all if you have. A sense of if we appropriately addressed some of the priority topics for climate resilience, land use in the recommendations. And then two, you know, if these are the recommendations that we end up moving forward with in a couple months when we're working on that final report. What are your recommendations as the experts here in Hopkinton for what can make these actionable? Like, what do you know about the community that's going to help us really flesh out this report to make it possible to implement? Recognizing it's one thing to have a report with recommendations, and it's very much another thing to actually get something passed in town meeting or. Get that sort of broader buy-in, so very curious to hear from you all about implementation. But we'll come back to these questions in a second. So, when we did that bylaw review, we had a list of about a hundred strategies that sort of emerged. And we started to organize those strategies with a prioritization matrix into these different nodes, and I think there's like fourteen nodes here. That are coordinated based on, and sort of things that came up consistently across the analysis. And so you can see all of those nodes there, and then we had a set of evaluation criteria that was based on the guiding principles. And those goals that the November core team meeting agreed on, so again, we made sure that we were. Making recommendations and prioritizing emergent strategies based on what John and Julia and everybody in that kind of core group. Wanted to see. And then, based on those guiding principles and those goals, we went through and scored every single priority node. Or topic area based on those principles, and so we scored the strategies on how to improve climate resilience in each topic area. And the purpose here was really to have a standardized, standardized methodology across the board. So that we could go back to this analysis at any time and sort of reassess, are these priorities really the right ones? Or do we want to change some of the scoring for, based on new information that's emerging and. Reprioritize something that didn't make the cut. So again, happy to share the like backbone, Excel document of this analysis with you all at any time. But basically, based on that work, we had a series of like the, the top priority actions. And those were the five priorities that you see here, so, one. We are recommending, again, in the draft, that we're excited for you all to have input on. That the general purpose statement within your bylaws acknowledges climate impacts and risks. As well as the connection between development practices and climate resiliency. So that that general purpose statement can really serve as that overarching framework. And that the subsequent updates are kind of baked into how the town are thinking about the part of the purpose of those bylaws. The second recommendation here is that the. Environmental analysis, that's part of the definitive plan for, for subdivisions. Could benefit from an expanded or more, more robust scope of work. And consider some additional pre-development conditions and post-development impacts, and we are very aware that. Anything we recommend in this, we want to be not having it be overly cumbersome to developers. And not have it prevent essential development that you all are going to be seeing in the years to come. And in the, the meeting I had with the Sustainable Green Committee earlier, someone asked her about this recommendation and was like. Is additional environmental analysis going to just slow down the process? And so that's a big consideration here, so I'm going to name that this is a recommendation, but we want to continue to vet it. Based on not making it too cumbersome for the processes that are essential. But we also recognize that we want to really be thinking about, you know, heat and the impacts of, of development on stormwater in particular. So, again, kind of looking holistically across the board. This third priority is really around the potential of overlay districts in the town. So, one that emerged was a housing overlay district, one was a high ecosystem carbon overlay district. And then the third was an amendment to the existing floodplain district. So this would be just sort of adding considerations that you all would utilize when you're reviewing things in those certain zones. Again, I know everyone here knows what an overlay district is, but those were three that emerged as like potentially good fits for you all. The fourth priority here is around the subdivision regs, so thinking about the existing tree protection and prevention standards. And recognizing that there could be an opportunity here to really recognize the benefits of trees. I know that's ironic after the discussion you were just having, but one of the. But one of the recommendations is, is that the open space and land preservation development bylaw could begin to expand to sort of think more about tree protection. And this could also take the form of a tree protection ordinance. So I think there's a couple implementation pathways to this priority. But that definitely emerged. And then the fifth and final kind of big priority node that came up was just around thinking through the, in the, the green infrastructure incentives and commercial and industrial development. So in the business and downtown business districts to really think through, how can we offset impervious surfaces, recognizing that in those highly pervious areas, there's going to be increased flooding over time. So wanting to think about, you know, incentives that could really lead to less pervious surfaces and more impervious surfaces. So those are the recommendations and I can hold, I can like leave this up when we get into the questions, but just super briefly. Where we're headed in terms of the summer is we're having this conversation with you all. We'll continue to talk with, with key stakeholders and these implementation partner roundtables. We're going to have a community wide open house in July. We'll be meeting again with that core team in August and then we'll be integrating all of this feedback into a final set of recommendations that we deliver to John and to the rest of the, the team. So again, the questions I'd love to discuss briefly with you all is did we appropriately address the priority topics for climate resiliency and land use in Hopkinton in these recommendations? And then two, what, what will make them actionable? So I'm gonna put this back up so you can see that in front of you and I will put the questions that I have for you in the chat, if that's an easy way to see them. But would love to open up the floor and hear from folks if you have any initial reactions to the questions. And if not, again, happy to put it in writing and hear from you all via email if it's helpful to like read the draft report and continue to digest all of this information.
Thanks Peyton for the presentation. Does anyone have any any initial comments for Peyton? Lucia, go ahead.
Thank you for that presentation. So one of the things that we learned very recently, although maybe John's known this, having done this for longer. Overlay in town, people tend to equate that with rezoning. So if it's a thing that people will see as this is changing things to be worse or bad or negative in some way, then that's, that's what they're going to hear when we go to town meeting to present any potential overlay districts. So that was one of the first thoughts that I had. When you were talking about key finding number four, the thought that I had about that was if there was maybe a way of this is something that's of interest to the town to encourage more affordable housing in order to achieve that. Because I know affordable housing and, you know, steering clear of 40B is something that we're also interested in and our affordable housing numbers have dropped from census to census 14% to, I want to say 10 point something percent. So we're just above that 40B number right now. So that was my thought when I saw that key finding.
Amazing. Both of these comments are fantastic. I made a note about the overlay district. And I think my follow-up question Lucia for you on that is is the concern the overlay district as a mechanism? Period? Or is it how we frame it to the community and like not emphasizing that language because it is seen as a negative word and people equate it to rezoning?
It's probably a combination of both, honestly. I do think that the presentation would be important in terms of how it is phrased and how it is presented. But I think anything that people see as, you know, this new thing that we're doing is negative in some way. If that's, I mean, I don't know what, what changes are at this point, but if that's what people are seeing, then there, there is more resistance.
Okay, that's helpful. And then your second comment about this key finding number four and asking like, how could this be related to our goals for more affordable housing? I took note of that as well. And that's a great, a great point in question. Other thoughts, I'm going back. Yeah.
Peyton, I, I don't think it's a new, I don't think it's a nuance. I think it's reality. Is that us as a board and I think the voters of town we represent want to stay above that 10% threshold. So affordable, for unfriendly 40B projects couldn't be built in Hopkinton. But in general, Hopkinton has gone through a lot of growth and it's required a lot of school buildings to be built, new schools, and it's required. It is, we're in the midst of taxes going up for every resident, every homeowner in town. And so there's not a huge, there's like, at least how the votes have gone at our town meeting, from what I can see, there's not a lot of receptivity to allow, to accommodate more housing or denser, denser housing. That would be my opinion. Like we had the MBTA Communities Bylaw come through and we proposed land areas that ultimately passed that already had condominium complexes. Because I think by and large, people were cognizant of more school age children adding to the school populations, requiring more schools to be built. And I think it's something like almost $200 million in budget and debt exclusions we've taken on in the past 10 years for school-related projects. Other than that, I I don't know what I don't know here. So I'm still thinking. Go, go ahead, Matthew.
Thanks. Yeah, I think it's important to temper that though with last town meeting. Right? One of the things that came up is that our increase in tax revenue isn't growing with how it has traditional, traditionally as well, as well. And the cause for that that was stated was the lack of town growth. Whereas the schools are not growing at the same rate that they were once were. So there, there may need to be a, and, and this was something that came up at town meeting, right? There may need to be a way of keeping a smooth growth, growth curve or reintroducing a smooth growth curve to the town as the growth that we had tapers off.
Thank you, Matthew and Robert.
Sorry, go ahead Lucia.
So the other thought that I had going off of that is there's also a lot of kind of desire, I want to say in town for there to be more affordable housing. This is something that comes up where people say it's too expensive. You know, any new construction or as houses turnover, it's too expensive. And I know with affordable housing, in some places they do prioritize people who live in town or people who work in town. For example, school teachers and firefighters and things like that. And so I think if that were kind of included in anything that would increase development, that might be helpful to get more support because people who live in town want to stay in town. They want their kids to stay in town. They want, you know, the school teachers to be able to afford to be in town. And so I think that would be another way that we could try to work that in as an incentive for the townspeople to support. You know, some some more development, not, as Rob says, there's definitely a desire to not have a lot more development, but I think that would be.
I think it's, uh, just to kind of expand, I think there's Hopkinton schools are very attractive for anyone that's looking to have school age children. There's no doubt about it. So there is a desire to have, for people to live in Hopkinton, move to Hopkinton. But, and usually people, there's a desire for more affordable housing for people that are either beyond, at retirement age or beyond and people starting out. But I would say the, like, my experience in voting in recent years is there hasn't been receptivity on a town, at a town meeting level to vote in that way. So yes, you'll hear comments and people will do want that. But as a collective body of voters, I just haven't seen that, that there's a, a drive to make zoning more or less restrictive to have denser housing, to build more, more housing in a more condensed manner.
So Rob, can I weigh in on this? I know I'm a resident of Hopkinton, but I think I have a little bit of perspective. I don't disagree with you that that is how votes have gone, though I think it's largely due to just a lack of information on, on the laypeople's part, right? There's assumptions that are made by general, the general public on what more housing means, especially in towns like Hopkinton where the school districts are good and some would say better than most. But there's also assumptions that are forgotten in the whole thing. So one of them is we have data statewide, countywide, wherever we can even do it locally that are multipliers for when you have a certain number of units built, this is how many schoolchildren are in those units. Rarely is it above point five. So what that means is you're not getting, you're not in reality getting one school child for every two units. I don't even know what the multipliers are specifically, but they're usually lower than a lot of people, a lot of people think. The other thing is when we say it's going to increase taxes, it's going to cost more to have these schoolchildren brought into the schools. We forget that a lot of the units don't have schoolchildren, but will also be paying new taxes to the town. And the, and the units that do have schoolchildren will also be paying new taxes to the town. Also, school populations generally don't have to, we don't have to increase school capacity until those classrooms are filled. So adding one child per grade isn't going to require so that 12, 12 students, right? So 12 grades, if you did 12 new students in town, one child per grade, that's not going to require a larger school because you can fit that one child into a classroom. And you can scale that up, right? So you don't need to have a new classroom until you have 15 new children in that grade. So there are things that are out there in the industry that they're not really discussed, they're not really talked about in town meeting type things and, you know, in development in general. And I understand town meeting votes certain ways because these are not really known, they're not really discussed, it's not common knowledge. But there are ways that that could be conveyed to the public where additional housing could be supported. It's just, it's not, it's not done all the time.
Thanks, John. Uh, Parker, go ahead.
I agree with what John said, just by the way, the other question I had about the priorities is like connectedness essentially for the town and prioritizing like sidewalks. I don't know if that's too in the weeds for where we're headed, but I just like look around corners, you know, we see, you know, the developments happening in Blueberry and we're going to have, you know, Charleswood and we're going to have this like massive, you know, opportunity in downtown where essentially Ash Street via the schools essentially are going to be connected and to prioritizing like walkable walkability as a, you know, critical way to lessen the use of fossil fuels and, and, you know, kind of use this huge bike path that we now have in the main street corridor and just kind of like put, you know, the direction of the town towards, you know, walkability. Is that in the green infrastructure techniques? And it's just like in the weeds, or if you could just like speak to that? Something I'm definitely interested in.
Thanks, Parker. Fantastic question. So decarbonization was not one of the goals that we were doing our analysis towards. So we were not explicitly looking for active transportation or EV charging opportunities, et cetera, et cetera. That being said, I think it's, it is all connected. And even though, like in this case, when we say green infrastructure, we're talking about like nature-based solutions that absorb and hold water to reduce flooding impacts, for example. But I think we have a lot of data that's come out of this and I think we can add in at this point in the process going into the summer, like what did we learn that, that could be relevant to walkability and address that question at least in like a peripheral way?
Thank you for appeasing me.
I mean, I'm biased. I'm a big fan. So totally, it's a great question. Other thoughts or questions that folks have? Great. Well, as a next step, what I think I'll do is I'll share, John has most of this, but I'll just share it in one package. The draft report and this slide deck and the questions that we have for you all and feel free to email Lucy or I at any time if you have additional thoughts about this now or later.
All right. Thank you, Peyton. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Bye y'all.
All right, this comes to the exciting, the end of our meeting agenda. I'd like to welcome Peter and Omna to the board. Thank you for making it through your first successful meeting. But at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn for this evening.
So moved.
Thanks, Matthew. Thanks, Michael. Roll call vote. Elise Mayelowski.
Yes.
Lucia Lopez.
Yes.
Matthew Ranka.
Yes.
Michael King.
Yes.
Parker Hap.
Yes.
Peter Mimo.
Yes.
Vikasath Prathi.
Yes.
Omna Dwan.
Yes.
And Rob Benson is yes. All right, everybody. Have a great night and we'll see you in two weeks.
Best.
Bye.